Hello, everybody, and welcome to the January fourteenth Planning Board meeting. I got my new gavel now in order. Tonight, we have a presentation of the proposed downtown zoning changes by M A P C. Have a review of twelve ponds, building, Pond Street building, the colors and the windows around the commercial area. And then a review and approval of minutes. And that's it, right? And then, and then whatever business we. That's what I'm showing online.
Isn't there a Metcalf item?
Oh. I completely skipped over that. Public hearing for ten Metcalf Avenue, a site plan review. So we'll start with presentation of proposed downtown zoning changes by M A P C, and I think Chris Kersel, he's here.
Hi.
Have him present.
Oh. Could I just share to the public, kind of join if they'd like? Thank you. So. If anyone would like to join the meeting, we are at meeting ID eight, six, five, one, two, six, four, six, two, five, zero. Passcode five, four, one, five, five, three. And if you'd like to join dial in with his phone, we are at six, four, six, eight, seven, six, nine, nine, two, three. Same meeting code and passcode, and all of those can be found on the agenda, which is on the website, ashlandmass.com. Chris, are you going to be sharing your screen?
Yes, I'd like to.
Let me know when that's all set.
We're ready to go.
All set. Take it away.
Well, thank you, everybody, for having me. Guess this is the magic of Zoom is I'm giving this presentation, and then I'm heading virtually down to Situate for another planning board meeting. So we're able to do that now, I guess, which is, I guess, a good thing. So. I think I've been here now several times. The, I think we've been kind of making steady, steady progress on these changes. So tonight, we will kind of discuss, I think, getting a little bit more into some of the nitty gritty details of some of the aspects. And then we also want to start the conversation about, one of the things that came up was potentially converting the A D D A district, which is an overlay district to base zoning. So we can kind of get some of your thoughts on that. And then if there's time, one of the other things that had come up early on was the potential for whether it would make sense to expand the district to some, in some ways. And then the, the plan was overall that I would come back. I think we had one more time for me to come back, kind of talk about again, further refinement of the zoning, and then we can continue talking about this issue of whether it makes sense to either convert the A to a sub-district. I mean, to an, um, base zoning or expand the, the downtown zoning in general. So I'll go through the slides. I think it seemed like it generally worked better if I kind of went through everything and then we went back. But if people want me to stop as I go along, obviously feel free to interrupt me. Okay. So after the last presentation and discussion, we had the planning board gave me a number of kind of feedback points. So I've incorporated those and just kind of wanted to acknowledge that a number of them had to do with just some improvements you had related to the diagrams that helped explain some of the various standards that we had. So I've, I've made those changes. We also had some discussion about clarifying what are the yard requirements? So I think today, the side yards has zero feet, and there was some discussion that, you know, maybe that makes sense, you know, if it's literally zero feet and they're touching, but otherwise there should be some standard requirement. So I think the number we had discussed was fifteen foot side yard setbacks. So I've included that. We can obviously, you know, change that to however the board thinks makes sense. I think fifteen feet seems reasonable to me. You know, just keep in mind that that means that buildings would be thirty feet apart because you have a side yard on both, both the buildings. We also had a discussion about the rear yard that it is probably too, too small when, when a property of Bots residential districts. And so we had some discussion about, you know, what would that be? So again, for now, this is still open to your feedback. What we're proposing is to increase it to thirty feet, which could then be reduced if the planning board feels like there's some reason to, you know, to, to have it, you know, if it's warranted essentially, and it wouldn't cause an adverse impact. So we give the, the plan with that power. But again, we can do thirty feet, we could do fifty feet. It's sort of up, up to you. And then the final thing was there were some questions, I think, I can't remember if this came from Pete or from one of the planning board members, but we have requirements that relate to the vertical modulation of a building. And someone asked that we also add some stipulations as it relates to sort of the horizontal modulation. So I've included that as well.
And real quick, on the rear yard, thirty feet, which can be reduced with planning board approval, maybe it might be smart to put like a, a minimum in there, like, so a planning board can't just come in and say you can go all the way up to the property line or something. Just a thought.
Do you think reasonable, the reasonable number would be kind of what the, what it is for when it's not against the, against the residential, which I think it's like twelve feet?
Yeah, but yeah, something we could discuss that, I guess, that I, I just think there should be like a minimum so that people can't go crazy. My thought, that's my thought.
That makes, makes sense.
I also think that. The side setback too could be. Something smaller with planning board approval as well.
Okay.
Because you really don't know, this could be any type of neighborhood, and that thirty feet might be a chasm. You know, if like, maybe it's, maybe it's next to an existing building that's only five feet from the property line. You know, so it's something I think we would want to look at as we kind of start to fill in the fabric of these different neighborhoods.
That makes sense. Okay. I'll refine it with that feedback. One of the members also thought it would be helpful just to actually have a zoning map to kind of look at and refer to. So I have that here. I don't have any specific talking points to this right now, but we can come back to this as if it feels helpful to kind of look at, you know, some of the properties as we kind of go through this. So again, this is now the, the kind of new version of the dimensional standards table, and I'll add the notes that we just discussed as well. The other thing that Pete had asked me to do was take a look at the lot requirements today that are required and actually compare them to what's there today. And so I went through a little bit of an exercise then to, to look into that. So I looked at the minimum lot size requirements for each of the sub-districts, as well as the frontage requirements for each of the sub-districts. So starting with the A D D A for, as an example, there's about forty-three parcels, give or take, I was counting them by hand, so I might have miscounted a little bit, but that's essentially what it is. And if you look, almost two-thirds of the parcels actually do not meet the minimum lot size. I include the minimum just to give a sense, but the smallest parcel that I saw was about fifty-five hundred square feet, whereas the minimum lot size is thirty-five thousand square feet. And so you have, like I said, two-thirds are not meeting that today. Frontage is kind of not as, as drastic of a story, which requires a hundred feet, but you have, you know, twenty-eight percent of the parcels are less than one hundred feet, the smallest being sixty feet. For the other sub-districts, it's again, it's not as drastic as I think the, the A D V A lot size requirement was. But again, you do have a number of parcels, if you look in, in parcel C, you have a lot of twenty-two parcels that are smaller than eight thousand square feet. So one other point, I think, I'll just go to the next slide for a second. Obviously, A D D A is an overlay district. So when you look at the base zoning, the base is the downtown commerce and industrial districts. Those minimum lot sizes are, lot areas are smaller than what the A D D A requires. And so, you know, to me, that doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense. So I think this is something that would be good for the planning board to kind of, you know, provide some input on, whether, you know, I think it makes sense. There could be some reasons why you want to have parcels, you know, conform to that thirty-five thousand square foot minimum size, or they can't redevelop without a variance. But I would say absent a, a good reason, it might make sense to lower some of these or relax some of these requirements. And so then the final thing, as I was mentioning, was there was this discussion about whether it makes sense to turn the A D D A overlay district into base zoning. And this again is just kind of intended to be a conversation to get your feedback on whether you think it makes sense that this came through from the survey and was, I think, in the original scope from a previous planner with a, with a thought being that it's, it's very complex bylaw with all these districts kind of all right on top of each other. And that, that could be a way to help simplify the bylaw. You know, another, I guess, positive reason to, to change that would be that it does ensure, I guess, that future development would be sort of conducive to, to what you consider appropriate generally for, for a downtown. But there's also, of course, you know, negative aspects that I think we obviously just to be clear about, existing, a number of existing uses and structures may no longer be conforming. Obviously, they'd be grandfathered in, but if they wanted to make changes, then that'd have to go to the Board of Appeals. And I think we should also just be frank that, you know, technically this does reduce options for, for the landowner, because currently he or she could develop under, you know, the overlay or the base zoning. But i- if it was only the A D V A is an option, that would be all that they could, all that they could develop under. So I think, you know, again, my, my opinion would be, you know, political considerations aside, I think it probably makes sense to do, but I think there's a lot of reasons why maybe it makes sense to hold off. So that, that, those are actually all the slides that we had at this point. So I'll just kind of turn it back to the board to have, provide questions or comments.
Do you have a slide handy that shows this district again, the A?
I guess. So it's where the, these hatch, the kind of hatch marks are. So it goes towards the, the train station here.
Yeah, I mean, I can see where the. It's hard, like those minimums that you said, the, the area minimums and the frontage minimums, because there's such kind of crazy, of such a variety of shapes of sites on this, and they're kind of crazy shapes as well. So, you know, and just a variety of some of the smallest sites to the largest sites are huge. It's, it's amazing that they're even in the same district. So I think that's a good thought to figure out what we want to. What we want to do about that. I know just from a professional perspective as an architect. You know, it, it, you come across this again and again and again, where, whereby project, even residential projects that I work with are almost always non-conforming, you know, because of, because of. Lot sizes and frontage that were put onto districts long after that house or lot was created. So how, how to deal with that, I'm not sure, but it seems like it would be best not to have all these projects coming back for special permits, because the majority of them are non-conforming. That seems kind of crazy to, as a, as a condition to start out with.
And also looking at this, just the question that. Mill Pond building there on Main Street that little corner there by the pond. Yeah. Is that going to affect, because they're trying to get a zoning change to do some other stuff? Is, is that just, are we being redundant or with that area?
My understanding was that they were looking to do a forty R district for that parcel. I don't know if that's still the current thinking. So that would be, it would be another overlay district. And you can see, and going back to the A D D A is like right where my cursor is, is a host of, of smaller parcels that fall that would clearly not be of the minimum size.
So. So everywhere where we have that hashing. The proposal that you're making is to add to existing zoning. This new A D D A overlay district, correct?
No, that, this exists today. You have this district today. So my proposal, well, I guess I have this too. One is I, I do think it might make sense to lower the minimum lot size, maybe for all of the districts, but I think the A was most noticeable. The second part was, and I wouldn't call it a proposal, it's more of an opening up for discussion, was whether it makes sense, so these, where these hash marks are underneath them, the base zoning is either downtown commerce or industrial. That it might make sense to have the A just be base zoning, so, which is the way that the B and the C are. I mean, I guess.
So on the other side of Pleasant Street, where it's in that. Mint color there and everywhere where that mint color is, that is outside of the scope of this discussion, correct?
Yes, that, that is a residential district, I believe.
It's out, I mean, the focus here is downtown, right? So it's outside of the scope of this discussion and, and what you've looked at in your proposals.
Yes, except to the extent that some people have mentioned in the survey that they thought that that would be a logical place to ex, expand it. I, I think frankly, trying to convert single family to, to downtown is generally politically untenable. I think if we're going to expand it, it would make more sense to be towards where it's already sort of industrial, commercial on the other side. But other than that, you're correct, I have not looked closely at that district, that area.
Can you say industrial, commercial, is that like? Those are two separate groups or?
Um, sorry, I'm, I'm not using that from a technical term of what the actual zoning district is. I just recall that the properties, kind of where my cursor is, that they're not residential today. And so that, that it might, if, if there was going to be an expansion, and that's, this was the other area that people had mentioned would make sense to them, I was, to me, that has more logic as well.
Because just looking at some of these areas. You know, it seems like some of them, of the ones that are at A right now, it seems like some of them, if we were just adding them to the base district, the base zoning, then it seems like some of them would fit better into industrial and others might fit better into commercial. Yeah, maybe, maybe with only a few exceptions, but it would be worth. Kind of looking at that, I guess.
I mean. Yeah, like some of the stuff there down there on Metcalf, I, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very serious mix of some residential. Yeah. Some, some kind of commercial, some, I mean, it's not zoned industrial, so I don't want to use, I don't want to use the term, but it's, it's a, it's a mix of commercial and residential. It's a, it's a real hybrid there.
Well, and the commercial is. The commercial isn't like going to a store commercial, right?
Yeah, no, it's not consumer, it's air conditioning shops and.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I can cut in, Metcalf Avenue is actually industrial.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense then.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought, but I, I wasn't sure what lay underneath the overlay that the way we see this here, right?
Yeah, totally. The brown is industrial, and then like the pinkish, the like dark pink is the downtown commerce. And I only mentioned because later we'll have a hearing about a Metcalf property and it's in the industrials.
Right. Well, so, I mean, I, do, do you have a before and after kind, kind of view of this, Mr. Kushel?
Um, no, but I don't, I'm not following what the question is when you say before and after.
Um.
How the new district going?
Do you mean what the resulting development could look like? Or do you mean the actual boundaries? The, the boundaries, I'm not suggesting.
So you're not suggesting changing any of the. District themselves, you're, you're suggesting making changes to the dimensional requirements of the existing districts. That's the.
Yes, I, I think for purposes of clarity, in terms of any question about expanding the district, I, I would suggest we just hold off on that till the next time I come back, because I think that's a whole separate question. What I'm, yes, I'm suggesting that I think the existing district should probably lower some of its standard, relax some of its requirements to allow for more properties to be part of it without requiring a special permit. And then the second piece was whether you think it makes sense to, to churn that these, you know, base zoning properties into, you know, just have it be only the A D D A. The answer just might be no to that, which is totally fine, of course. I, I think we just wanted to kind of raise that for discussion.
Um, so. Um. I, I, I think, um. Yeah. This is a very heavy. This is some of, my opinion, this is some of the most complicated. Topics that the, the, that this board can deal with, in my opinion. It impacts absolutely everybody, and it is a, is a, one of these matters that is. It's sensitive. It's very sensitive for the community. I mean, I, I. I kind of personally feel like we need to devote kind of as a board, kind of a working session, and it's happy enough for, you know, to be on camera and on Zoom. But. I, I, I mean, I think that, that we need to spend some dedicated period of time as a board really digging into this and discussing it and pulling it apart and actually really thinking hard about this and talking about it. And I just think it's, I, I think that we should do that in an upcoming meeting, my opinion, as one member of the board. It's a, it's big. It's.
I agree with that because I think, you know. I mean. The board really is, I mean, including myself, I haven't been on that long, and we have other members have been on less time than me. It's almost like starting from the beginning. Okay, what does yellow mean? And what do we allow there? Well, you know, what is the, what is the future goal of there? And what does pink mean? And what does blue mean?
Right.
And then, you know, it's almost like starting at the beginning, so we're all on the same, we all have the same base knowledge, and then deciding, well, and then thinking about, well, you know, those shaded areas. What would be the number one thing we would like those to be? It's a little hard to, it's, it's a little hard to just give a right answer right now for me, because I'm, I'm not sure. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the, what the big picture is. And so I, I agree with Joe that it's something that we want to make sure we kind of review from the beginning and look at carefully before. Making like an overall change. That said, I agree that I think it'd be really nice to simplify things. I think that would be a, a great idea for, just for the community as a whole, to have, to have this be a little simpler, because it does get kind of crazy complicated with all, all the overlays. So it just might, it just might take a little longer to make sure we really follow the right steps.
And it seems like there are layers to this. So when you have on that same street, you have one section, which is Addy, but then there are a few other parcels which are not. So it's like also figuring out how it's going to affect things in the surrounding as well. So I absolutely agree with Joe and Trisha. It feels like it needs a totally different working session to literally go and dig a little more deeper into the whole thing than looking at the big picture itself.
And the Addy seems to be on either side of the MBTA line, right? The MBTA line runs in the middle of this, right?
Yeah, it's, it's that gray, it's this gray line right here, correct, Mr. Kushel?
Yeah.
That's the train, that's the train body.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, that's why we need to consider more, right? Because if we have to put some, some kind of setback on either side, that's, that's something we need to think about.
I mean, at, at face value, I, I mean, I do think, I think, I, I, I think it's very, it is interesting that so, such a large percentage of the properties in the, in the zone that you looked at are, are not. of the properties in the in the zone that you looked at are are not in compliance with it. And I think it's a good point and I think it's part of what we have to think about and discuss.
You know. Also, it it'd be nice to see kind of a what businesses are there because some of those lots have houses and some have businesses and some have just put a lot of money into redoing it. So I don't know if they're going to be. You know, it, there's a church there, there's a big. You know, we just did the one over.
The Pleasant Street, the large commercial building there.
To get an idea because which, which properties probably are most likely to be developed. Because I think there's quite a few along there that are just going to stay the way they are for a long, long time, which that'll be in the future and still have to have a plan for it, but to to maybe focus on some of these smaller properties where they might take the house off and put something else up. But then some of these larger ones where they've just done huge develop their place and like maybe the church and the some of these other places that may never. You know, it might be thirty years or forty years before they change.
Yeah. I mean, so, so my, so my gut here is, is you know, I I I do think we need to, I think there's quite a bit of work here and time to spend. So I'm like from my my opinion, I think we should block um a meaningful chunk of time at our next meeting dedicated to this topic. Dedicated to as a board, you know, in a public meeting digging in and you know, it's going to look a little bit odd. It's not going to be a typical planning board meeting, but we're going to be kind of working and looking at this collaboratively and talking about it. Uh, for a period of time at a future board meeting. And I think Emma, I think you need to help the board with some homework and some very pointed kind of, all right, here's a zoning map. This is, I need you to review the following and like we need homework. Uh, we need homework to come to that meeting to say, okay, at a base level. I've looked at this and I understand this at some level and here are my questions. And I think if we take that approach. I think if everybody's done some base level of looking um and based on kind of what what makes sense, um, I think we could have a productive discussion about this. And obviously, some of us are new or some of us have been around, but we'll we'll all learn from the questions and the discussion that we have. And it may take more than one session, but I I think we need to dive into it and I think we should look at that for our next meeting at at least an hour of time to kind of say, we're gonna, we're gonna really dig in. So um, that's my opinion.
Do the um, just do the add B and to the two add B. Oh, maybe I'm not, maybe not understanding here. These are. Do all of these districts, A, B, and C all have underlying zone, underlying zoning as well? Are they all on top of?
No.
Just A?
Just A. B and C are base zones. It's only A, that's the overlay.
Okay, so the idea would be to that add A would be the base zone and you would get rid of the commercial industrial underneath it.
That would be the idea, right? Like I said, I'm not, so I'm saying you should do that. That's that's.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I was just, I was trying to understand if it was the other way around, like to, yeah, so um, yeah, so that makes sense.
So Pete, I see that you've joined um. The discussion is about, you know, dev- devoting another kind of session to thinking about this issue of whether it actually could make sense to to um convert this to the A D D A and really think through all of the potential issues that could relate, that could occur based upon doing that.
Yeah, and I don't know that you should necessarily even be there, Mr. Trishel. I I mean, that that's up to you if you, so, you know.
I have no shortage of night meetings, so if I'm, if I'm not going to be helpful, I don't need to be there, but if it's helpful for me.
I'm sure you'd be, I'm sure you'd be helpful, but I I think this is about the board doing its thing and trying to get its arms around it. So whatever, whatever, whatever the board thinks.
Okay. All right, um, so so that makes sense. In terms of the lot size and whether that makes sense, you know, one other option could just be doing something similar to what we were talking about with the side yard and and you keep that minimum, but then you give an opportunity and and say, you know, this, this could be reduced um based upon approval of the planning board and that gives some like discretion. If 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 a lot that is smaller than thirty five thousand square feet has a great proposal for doing a mixed use development um that that they can still, you know, move forward. They just kind of would then have to essentially prove why that it still makes sense. And so that's something else to consider, an alternative in this way.
I think the protections about with these kind of crazy mix of uses about saying, hey, it's a residential property. If there's an existing and in use residential property that we, that then we have to give a bigger cushion. You know, the more typical of a residential property, you know, that might just hold. You know, maybe that's, that's something that can hold for all the, you know, um setbacks. As this neighborhood eventually undergoes these kind of changes, but we're still protecting the residents that are there and have a right to be there. Um, similar to, you know, what happened at eighty one West Union, so. But again, I think like Joe said, it's topics for a wa- a longer, more in-depth discussion at another time.
And also, if we do that too, I want to make sure, is there, is is, what's the timeline on this whole pro- this whole project we're doing here? Is there any timeline for?
Pete, you got thoughts in terms of the timeline? Um, it, I think, you know, we have flexibility on the M A P C side um for the most part, so.
I'm just thinking because uh, if we're going to have a special meeting on this, I would like to have everybody have the information ahead of time to be able to look it over ahead of time so that we don't come back and start, keep asking questions about, you know, what's the yellow, what's the pink, all that. So if, to make sure everybody can be prepared so that we concentrate on, you know, we can get some progress done. And also, um, the we will talk about it later, but we may have a another meeting on Wednesday. I'm sure, I don't know if everybody's heard about that with the selectmen, but so maybe the next meeting might not be unless there's a time restraint. And I don't know what's on the agenda for the next meeting either. So I just want to make sure if we're going to set it up that we, that everybody has the heads up and everybody's prepared. And, you know, with all the basic stuff and like we said, you know, Em can help us, Pete can help us, we can you know, get get maps, we can get have all this information, study it. Um, but just so that we're all, we all have what we need and we're prepared to really, so we can get something done.
I agree.
That's just, that's just kind of a scheduling thing and and making sure everybody, you know, it's not like the minutes. This is more of a, like, really got to get your, wrap your head around a lot of this stuff of what's there, what's going on, what's overlay, what's not, what's so, as as long as everybody's prepared, then we can put it on the agenda and get some, you know, make some real progress. But I don't want to delay anything if there's a, there's an end date to this or a or this is just going to end up being a report and then we Pete, we can help.
Yeah, so the, so the the report is really kind of the draft zoning bylaws, which kind of Chris has helped us kind of go through. Um, regarding the timeline, obviously, we, you know, we've been, we've been working on this for a while. The major thing was this town received a grant uh, a couple of years ago from the state that we had to use up. We, you know, we kind of, we need to use it or we're going to lose it. And so at this current time, uh, I've worked with Chris and and we have actually used up the entire state grant. And so therefore, uh, which gives us a little bit more flexibility on time. Um, because right now, the the remaining part of the grant or the remaining part of the funding with M A P C and Chris, please, you know, correct me if I'm speaking out of terms, uh, is really the portion of the grant funds that uh came from the technical assistance program through M A P C. And so really from regarding the timeframe regarding the grant funding and the help that Chris has provided us uh, through the direction that uh, in 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 the work that he's done, really has kind of come, you know, really is dependent upon the M A P C grant funds. With that said, I agree, Dale, you know, I, Joe, I do like your idea of kind of having a work concession to focus on this. And uh, and I, Emma and I, and I'm really, you know, I'm I'm on board with trying to get, you know, everybody the information and the maps ahead of time and uh you know, and 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 really walking the downtown, you know, and I think that's a good thing to do too, to kind of understand, you know, with maps in hand. Um, understand, you know, what is subdistrict A and subdistrict B and and what are we proposing here? So I think that's also, I think that's a good boots on the ground, um kind of practice uh to really kind of ground truth what what the zoning bylaw would uh hopefully develop within the downtown.
Yeah, I, I, I actually, I I think that's even better idea, Peter, is is like, if we were to schedule this, um but you know, we, I I don't know, it would be possible to like, schedule an in-person. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how in person would work, but like being able to walk it and actually like maybe that comes after we spend the time uh on a Zoom, right? And go through it. Maybe we do like a we schedule a walkthrough. Again, anybody from the public could attend that walkthrough. We could schedule it out. But I I I think it's a great point, like looking at it, talking about it, and then actually walking it and thinking about what we talked about. That that would be like the way to really do it.
Mark, I'll get to you in a minute when we're done here. You don't have to keep your hand up.
Anyway, I won't forget.
No, I think, I I think Chris has really kind of helped us, you know, helped this board take a look at it, review the bylaw, I mean, review the downtown overlay, did down the district to see what's going on, what the town, what we, you know, that really kind of the outline of the direction we want to go in. And uh, you know, I think, you know, we've come, we've made some great strides, but, you know, I agree with, you know, I kind of like Joe's idea, maybe to have like I'm a working session, looking at it and taking the time to go forward and really kind of analyze it.
And maybe having a, maybe having a quick sheet with the the parts we're thinking of changing.
Yeah, no.
Like so we can, when we're, when we're looking at it, we can say, right now it's this and this is what we want to make it. So looking at that, how would that change?
Sure, you just want to, you're, you're, you correct me if I'm wrong, Dale, you'd be asking kind of for a red line version.
Yeah.
Is is to to kind of to compare the before and after and what would it look like? Is is that?
I I think that's all good ideas.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, you know, obviously, I think we make great strides and, you know, I think, uh, you know, we can kind of, uh, and I apologize for um, not making it to Chris's presentation, however. Uh, I I I can say we can work on those in 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 the coming weeks and, you know, to kind of keep that kind of momentum rolling forward. Uh, obviously, we would love to get this, you know, ready for the next town meeting. Um, however, due to COVID, you know, I think, you know, the the best thing that we can do is to continue to work on this uh slowly and steadily and make sure it's at a point and it and it's ready to go uh with any other zoning matters. I know Dale, you 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 have the front porch. Uh, the front porch zoning by law, you want to, you know, what you want to get on the, on the docket. Uh, but I think we can just do our best and like I said, get everything ready to a point where when we are allowed to have a quote-unquote normal town meeting, uh, the planning board will be ready to kind of take action.
Anybody else on the board have any comment? Mark, a quick comment from Mark.
Good evening. And um, my name is Mark the Sony for the Hutton Road S and S. And talking about, about all the zoning is like me going back and saying I have a pretty good understanding of what zoning is as Peter and Amber both know from the years of being here and the, the past um planning board directors know that I worked on zones before. And I want to work on this one with the group together and put, put my input that I do know, I know how to say in there. And to Mr. Kushel. You says, I'm not going to, I don't want to insult you, but you you're a brand new person with brand new voice in this. That's that zone that um, A eight, add A has been there for years. One, the original mixed commercial industrial which underlaid reason is why it was plagued, it was knocked out that way. It was because Ashland was this very small beginnings of an industrial and residential came later. So I'm going to just go, I'm working on it and saying, I want to work together on this, because I probably have a little bit of a knowledge. And I can see that the um, add A and the um, the hash marks in there is chopped up to what you want to make it brand new to bring to town meeting, which you won't have enough time to, because it goes to meetings, public forums and uh and public notices too. You gotta go through all that stuff and then next meeting is not going to be till next uh fall. And um, to work, to understand to what you want to get there. And then Mr. Kushel, what is your, through message to the chairman, to Mr. Kushel, what is your idea for this um trying to upgrade this add A? What are you trying to put in?
We already went over all that.
Well, I mean, as I mentioned, I wasn't trying to make any changes to the add A other than all of the minor dimensional standards that we've already kind of been discussing. The discussion was whether, and again, I wasn't saying it does make sense. I was just raising the question of, does it make sense um to discuss, should the overlay district that is the A D D A as it exists today become base zoning? So exactly where it is, the the boundaries would not change in any way. It would just be where it is, but rather than being on top of the industrial or downtown commerce districts, it would be its own district based zoning.
Okay, so is the chairman to Peter? What is this grant going to be used for?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Chris from M A P C who is a professional planner, Mark, and who does this throughout the state uh in Metro Boston. Providing planning boards like ours, uh, professional guidance and experience. And so I first want to make a note of that, that uh, I like myself, uh, Chris and I are both A I C P certified through the, you know, American Certified, you know, planners. So I just want to make a note of Chris's, you know, uh, professional uh, uh accomplishments, I would say. And so, Mark, you've been on all the planning board calls when we've gone over the zoning and the zoning changes. And so every, all, all this work is online, it's on our website. And so if you have any comments, you know, please feel free and 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 reach out to myself, you know, via phone or an email. And I'm I'm happy to have a conversation with you. I know, Mark, I printed those out for you.
Okay, yes.
I was a nice guy one day at work and I printed out the bylaw for you. Grant was, the grant actually was applied for by the previous planner in two thousand and nineteen. And it was for a uh technical assistance grant where the state, uh, the Housing Department of Housing in Community Development uh gave a grant to the Town of Ashland to review its downtown zoning. And and so that's what we are doing. Uh, it was, like I said, it was a grant applied for by the previous planner to review the downtown. Downtown zoning, that's what we are doing here tonight.
Okay, now back to you, Mr. Chairman. You were saying that you want to put a uh for our next meeting, you and uh member Rubiton and all of us have a um a a hour or so agenda item to work to get, get introduced and get it worked on. I would like to have um input on on that through you, Mr. Chairman, the director, Emma too. Cause um, figured what is known can be said by a person that is not on a board that can have, make some sense out of it. And and it's going to be through the selectmen too, the select board. Because they have to just put zones out there as an agenda feature. Committee, planning board, zoning board appeals and stuff like that to agen- agendarize and get out there on paper.
Okay, that's all process stuff. You'll be notified. You'll be at, you can be at the meetings just like you are now. We're talking about everybody doing their own research on their own. We're talking about everybody doing their own research on their own of any questions they may have and then getting together and discussing it. In which we'll, you'll see that on the agenda and then you can be in that meeting.
Okay, and one last thing and I'm hoping it through the chairman. To Peter and Emma, can you eat, can you eat? You got my emails. I know you've got my email and I'm on the uh listserv and the town and the town website and all that stuff. I would like to have some ideas that we can coincide. On this back and forth. So I, so we, you get my thoughts and I won't be interrupting the next meeting that's gonna be like an hour long. That you can probably have other people talking to. I'd be put, I would have the, what I say already as in your packets. To work on as the meeting goes on. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you can coordinate that with Pete and Emma. We'll we'll email each other, Mark, and and you can email me tomorrow, I'll be in the office and I'll I'll be happy to uh to get you any information that you. That you request so you can put your thoughts together.
Now, I put my thoughts together and go, what you, what, to the chairman, what you have that you you gave before and what we worked on. Me, me, you and Emma worked on. Is A add A ADDA is gonna be underlying reasons. That should be good assurance.
Okay.
We'll work on that together, Mark. Thank you.
All right then, if another, other planning board members don't have anything to add to that, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, Chris, very much. Hard work and you.
Chris, thank you so much.
All right, talk later.
Okay, so now we have a public hearing for ten Metcalf Avenue Site Plan Review. The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty one at seven fifteen via Zoom. Hear the petition of Judith Barberie, George Connors requesting design plan review and site plan. Review for chapter forty eight, section six of the zoning act, chapter two eighty two, section eight point five, nine point six, nine point four. Of the Ashland bylaws, the applicant is proposing the construction of a thirty foot by forty foot metal building. With site improvements that shall include parking area and stormwater management. The property in question is located at ten Metcalf Avenue, assesses map thirteen lot zero nine zero in the industrial zoning district. Ashland Downtown District Subarea A and Solar Overlay District. Party wishing to be heard on this matter can submit comments to the planning board ahead of time. Late for that now or appear tonight, which is now. Um, materials, any materials on this can be viewed at Town Hall during normal business hours or on the website. And you can go to the cases before the planning board on the website. They cover everything, Pete?
Uh, yes, that covers everything uh for the most part. Uh, I know George Connors is here tonight to represent at the applicant uh application. Uh, this applicant um, application is for the parcel on Metcalf, which is obviously off of Pleasant. Uh, in the downtown overlay district. Um, because of the size and the shape and the history of the lot that George was able to kind of uh research and uncover. Um, just to give everyone kind of a little bit of a backstory and. Uh, either I can tell it or or George, you can fill in any of the gaps. But um, we believe in the uh, well, number one, it was a, it was an undersized parcel for the district. And so, uh, uh, we believe within some of the research that George put together. That the lot was created back in, I believe, the sixties via a zoning board of appeals variance, which had not been. Uh, which we tried to research and on the registry of deeds and then the town clerk's office, but we couldn't have put our hands on it. However, with that said, we treated it as a preexisting nonconforming lot due to size. From from the overall size here. And so with that said, Mr. Connors has brought this application forth to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals found this uh made a section six finding concerning the preexisting nonconforming. Uh. I would say, I would say uh, the preexisting nonconforming um requirements or regulations that surround this parcel. Uh, and therefore, the zoning board of appeals actually found that the proposal, the proposal here. Uh, is not more subtly uh substantively detrimental. Uh, and so therefore, they approved the special permit to allow this. Uh, proposed development to take place on the preexisting nonconforming parcel. With that said, which is a little bit confusing, um, it was the right steps. Uh, and it was the proper procedure for George to go through. Uh, because of the small, uh, the smaller undersized lot that the proposal here has. Uh, with this said, uh, George is here tonight representing the application, uh, which is for site plan approval. Uh, furthermore, uh, the application and the applicant has met with the design review committee. Uh, last week and I can let Emma um indoor, uh, George fill the board in to to what you're inspired at that meeting. Uh, and then moving forward, this application will also have to go in front of the conservation to receive a stormwater permit. So tonight, George, she's here representing the application to the planning board for a site plan review process. Uh, so with this said, uh, through you to the chairman, I will hand this over to George, uh, the representing attorney here. And I will ask George to walk the planning board through the site plan.
Good evening, thank you. My name is George Connors. I'm attorney representing um, Mr. Barberie and uh, Mr. Reardon tonight. On ten Metcalf Avenue, I'm also civil engineer with Connor Stone who prepared the plans and did the survey work on that particular site. Ten Metcalf Ave is in the industrial zone, it's a previously uh created lot back in the sixties. And as Peter indicated, there was uh probably a variance issued for that. The uh A and R plan that was recorded and endorsed by the planning board. Create that lot and the lot just north of it. Um, had a note circ- circumscribed in the uh endorsement area on the plan. That it was subject to a variance, the building inspector, Peter and um myself all agreed. After having done some research at the registry and with the town clerk, that it did not exist, the ordered variance. But the lot north of it and this lot were carved out at the same time. And the lot north of it is about half the size. This lot is about twelve thousand five hundred square feet. It's roughly a hundred feet deep and a hundred and fifty feet wide and it meets thirty thousand square feet. It's at twelve thousand five. So zoning board did issue the uh section six A binding. We have a thirty by forty building going on the lot. The lot was a contractor's yard. It had a couple of trailers on it where people actually occupied them. They've been removed. The lot is completely denuded, it gravel and pavement in various areas. It's pretty much flat, the uh contours um vary by less than a foot over it. Coincident with the street, there is some drainage from the north to the south. On the lot, we are proposing the building at the average setback of the buildings, which is a provision in the zoning code. To keep the building up close to the street. And we'll have parking behind it facing the lot, you can see the building. And on the left side of it, we're coming in in our driveway and we have parking for the building occupants behind the building. That's adjacent to the existing residential structure that's to the north of the lot. Putting in a fence along that lot, Mr. Reardon has indicated he's talked to the uh owner of that particular lot. As you see that house and he's in favor of it, there's gonna be some plantings along that area as well. Then on the southerly portion of our lot, it says proposed contractor's yard, that's just gonna be gravel parking area. And storage for their trucks and various um equipment that they uh use. And have these little uh looks like rock um shapes going along the perimeter of the lot. And one in the middle behind the building, those are infiltration trenches. There is no um drainage uh in the area um and the lot pretty much infiltrated into the ground. We are collecting water before it goes off in accordance with stormwater standards. And that water will sheet off to. Towards perimeter of the lot on the north, on the east and on the west side. And also um behind the building, there will be the paving of those parking spaces where water will sheet into that. Um, infiltration trench, so that stormwater application is either being filed or has been filed with conservation. That'll proceed as our next step. Um, to the bottom of the plan below the note that says part map thirteen parcel thirty is the railroad. That uh runs uh east and west. Um, the neighborhood is generally a neighborhood with one house and some various houses that occupy. The uh existing buildings and have um some sort of commercial aspect to them. There's electricians and uh other people working in that area that park their trucks and use the area for. Commercial uses or industrial type uses. The propane um distributor at the very top of the street at Pleasant. Street is generally flat, there is sewer and water in it, there is overhead utilities. Did note that we would like to just do a utility drop from the pole, which is right in front of the building. For the building rather than an underground service in our application, other than that, there'll be a new sewer and a new water um connection. And the um area in front of the building is gonna be landscaped, Mr. Reardon did appear with the uh. The uh designer review board the other night and I understand he sent some additional material back outlining some of his landscaping. Minimal as it is, it's a kind of an industrial lot and it's gonna be in a lot better shape than uh it it probably is or was. And at this point in time, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Dale, you're muted.
There. Is this a two-story building or is it just? One big tall building with or has a loft or mezzanine up there or?
Yeah, the latest plans that uh he sent show a um building that has uh windows on the gable end. Above the garage doors, I think it's a high um first floor area and then a small uh office type thing above.
So. Trying to look at the drawings here from all of the sides. Is that two units?
No, it's just one, one unit.
Okay, I was wondering, cause in the back they have two doors and then two garage doors on the front.
I don't know if they're gonna leave out part of their lot. Maybe Mr. Reardon can tell us that.
No, we just have the uh the two doors in the back now, just uh, just for access. It's it's one, one big building.
Okay.
What's the, what's the intended business use for for this new garage?
Go ahead, John.
Landscaping, contracting, uh masonry and landscaping.
Will they, they'll be able, they'll be storing all their stuff inside the building?
Yes, yes, we'll store our equipment inside and have our uh trucks and and uh trailers parked outside in the uh, in the contractor's yard.
What about, would you keep materials on site, crushed stone, mulch or anything like that?
No, no.
Anyone else?
So is this a, is this um? Are we needing to approve a special permit here or this is the special permit has already been granted? What?
By plan review.
Before a special, for the special permit?
So the, there's no special permit, this is site plan review only.
Okay.
The special permit came from the zoning board of appeals because of the undersized lot. And so therefore, because it was a preexisting nonconforming lot and we propose as use to extend this. To to really get it to the point of the planning board for the site plan review process. Uh, we, they had to go through the zoning board of appeals and it was really because of that nonconforming. Aspects of the lot itself.
Okay.
To allow this to move forward, because it's in the industrial zone, it's almost an allowed use uh moving forward.
Okay, so everything else having to do with um. Uh, building height, building use, that's already um, that that's all um allowed under the, under the zoning.
Yeah, so the building fits the zoning requirement, setbacks, height, you know, and and so they've kind of dealt with that. Um, this project, the project, also they're gonna go through stormwater review, they're proposing stormwater fixtures. Right now, there's no stormwater on the site and, you know, and 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 visiting the site that I have. Uh, the site was, um, I don't want to be disrespectful in any way, but it was under, it it, you know. It it wasn't, you know, it had a couple abandoned trailers on it or trailers. Um, and it was in need of investment and and.
I I drove down there today, so if today is an improvement.
Yeah. Uh, it's so, I I see personally, see this is an improvement. Um, and uh, in the building height and the size and the, in the, in the location of the building is driven by the zoning. In the setbacks and it meets the zoning criteria here. Uh, so with this said, it's it's really, is there enough parking for what 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 is proposed? Um, obviously, I think Joe, I think Joe hit on a great point, storage, I mean, no outdoor storage. Um, you know, the designer review board that, you know, looked at this, you know, they did a great job and. For some softening and I know Mr. Reardon changed the the elevations and he's gonna put some windows in. Uh, and adding more landscaping to kind of fit in with the, you know, just to try to soften it and create more of a relationship with the abiding properties. I would say, which is a residential use. Um, but no, I think he is, you know, this this application does check all the boxes here. Uh, and the major thing is the stormwater is is being, is under review. Uh, and and obviously will meet that criteria needed. Uh, but regarding parking and, you know, just those aspects are what we should be looking at tonight.
Uh, the other thing I would say is that, um, you know, there's a, I I believe there's a house across the street. I mean, there's obviously, there's some scattered residential properties um a- along the street. Some of them seem to be um residential with an attached business maybe. Um, and though we're holding the sightline or the um. The the frontage line with the house next door, the street isn't very wide. And I think this building would be, well, maybe not too much taller than the houses across the street, but maybe a a little bit bigger. And so we're just always looking to be kind of kind to the residences that are there. I'm not saying this isn't, it looks like a, a good proposal to me, but it's a little hard to tell on, because those, you know, those things aren't. Shown, like the other house isn't, the shown, this this house across the street isn't shown. So you can't, you can't really tell how, what the relationship of um, of that house is to, who would also be in a butter. Um, to the new building, so it'd just be nice to, it'd be nice to see. I'm kind of looking at the um, you know, on uh Google Maps, you know, to kind of see it. Um, but try to, to try to understand where the building would be relative to the house across the street. I'm not sure it's a um, a problem, it's just something I'm uh, wondering if any, if if those neighbors are also on board. Um, in that blue house or is it just the one neighbor that's been addressed? Does this go through like, um, is it a public hearing process, I assume, or neighbors were notified?
Uh, just to speak to that, Trish, yes, this is a public hearing, you know, butters were notified. Well, for both the zoning board and the this public hearing, uh, and ads are running the newspaper. So this is a full public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Uh, and I will let George, uh, George, if you could handle that question regarding the relationship between this proposed development. And the uh, in the abiding properties.
I believe Mr. Reardon owns a lot of building across the street, is that correct, John?
Yes, I do. I own the the last uh house on the end. So it's a two-story house, it's a, it's a similar uh uh size, I would say, pretty close. And the house next to it is, is also a two-story house, so they're, they're very similar.
That's got a large garage out front, right?
Correct.
John, do you know, just the, the setback, I, I, I believe, you know, visiting the street, those, those houses to me look like they're pre-existing non-conforming regarding front yard setback. Would you? Could you tell me, you know, roughly, uh, how far do you believe those houses are a setback from the street?
We used the one in the adjacent lot and I think that's six feet. I think I measured that the last time for the zoning.
Six feet?
Think, let me just, uh, I don't remember things like I used to.
Is that, I've got the Google and my street view of this. Do you want to?
Oh, six feet.
Six feet?
Then I had a couple of questions. You have a dumpster on this?
Yeah, it's, it's located right behind the building, um, just off the pavement to the south of the pavement.
Okay, that'll be screened off on the, this. The lighting, make sure that the lighting complies with, so it's not shining on the neighbors.
Yeah, they're all downlighting, uh, pictures along the building.
I think looking at the, um, looking at the street view of what was there previously, um, you know, I, I do, I think this, this, this will, um, you know, this will be substantial, um, you know, improvement in, in, in the property and, and the use and, uh, I don't know. I think, um, thanks for being open to the design review comments and adding the windows and doing that, Mr. Redden. Um, and, and, uh, I, I mean, I, I think, I, I think I'm, I'm okay with this. We, you know, we checked the box on, you're not storing landscaping materials on the site. There's a plan for the dumpster. And you believe you have sufficient parking for what you intend to do with the business?
Correct, yes.
I agree. Anyone else on the board have any comments before we go to the public? Okay, then we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody has comment, we'll start with Mark.
Yes, I do have a couple, but not, not major things. I was present on the call for the zoning board as Mr. Redden noted, I asked, asked some questions. The traffic and, um, residential and all that stuff. Um, and it's just like how the, uh, as Ruberton said, in the zoning board, you have one design, picture design up there. But they had no windows and they suggested maybe a couple of windows on either side and now you got them there. And, uh, maybe it was a different, different committee that mentioned that, but now considering that where it is and your house is down, this right across the street, you know, that, um, we have motorized traffic back and forth. Setback on that road and that cat was not grandfathered. That's why it's only six feet, but what was original bylaw was a ten-foot town. But now Metcalf is not grandfathered for that. Your building at the end, in accordance with the stormwater management, had no problem with that, is understanding and now you're, now you're doing everything through the book, through all the committees and all that's, and everything, the bylaws and all that. It fits in as a newer building and it's at borderline to fit it in as a chara- as character to the neighborhood. So good luck with what you got and, um.
Thank you, thanks. Uh, anymore, I can't, I mean, Emma, maybe you can see if anyone's waving or trying to get in and talk. There's any more public comment? Nope.
I, I don't see anyone and if you'd like to comment, you can either raise your hand in Zoom or turn your video on, um, and let us know. Or unmute and let us know. I just wanted to say that because there's some people without their video.
Any board members have any other comments on the site plan review? Seems pretty simple.
No, that's it.
Well, then I guess if, uh, we're ready, I can, we can close the public hearing if we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, the, the designer review committee did ask them to come back next week with those proposed changes, the windows.
So we're not going to vote on this tonight?
And that is up to you. Uh, they just haven't issued their final report yet. Just wanted to make you aware, I don't think that.
Does anybody else on the board have an opinion on that?
Emma has, so, so the design review hasn't issued a final letter indicating their comments, but they've given feedback and Mr. Redden has addressed that?
Yep, their, their main one concern, uh, was softening the building, um, to help it fit into that kind of mix of residential and commercial. Um, and their two suggestions were adding windows and, um, increasing the landscaping, uh, which the applicant has done and has sent in those plans.
We take a conditional approval subject to a positive letter from design review, if that helps.
Yeah, we could do that. I, I'm not sure we really need that, but.
I, I think it'd be the right thing to do just because the, you know, the relationship with the design review committee and the planning board and the work that they've done. So, um, if they've asked to see something, I, I, I think that we should honor that. But I'm, uh, I'm good with, um, what Mr. Connor said about having a condition upon approval with the design review.
I'm, I'm amicable to that too.
So we're going to prove it with the condition that the design review agrees that what they've done is what they asked for.
Yeah, I can, excuse me, I'll just jump in, but, uh, I can, I'll create a, 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 a condition citing that, uh, the office, they'll have to go back to design review. Um, and, and obviously put a date on it, uh, whatever the next meeting is. Um, and upon a favorable outcome or favorable vote, uh, from the design review committee, the, uh, you know, the, the, the project will be forward. Um, and then I also can put in a condition regarding, you know, prior to, uh, the application of a building permit, they can submit, you know, um, any renderings of the building back to the planning board with, with a color palette for a planning board's final review, uh, very similar to what we do with the other, you know, kind of mixed use building. Um, and, you know, it, it with, with obviously approval, um, not held, uh, you know, withstand, you know, stuff.
I think that'll work.
Sounds good.
So first we would close the public hearing, right?
Uh, it was a public hearing, yep, and then hear a motion to vote.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor, you need to roll call, please.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Sorry.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Gadiipa.
Deepa Mangatay.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, and that passes five zero zero. Public meeting now, we'll entertain, we can take a vote whether to approve the site plan review with the conditions that we discussed about going back to the um, site plan review or final okay and also any color exterior um, colors and, um, design, you know? How would I say that?
Sorry, let, let's clean this one up, you know, in my opinion, sorry.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to remember what Pete, how he said that.
Yeah, I, I would say the number one thing is, you know, to motion, uh, that, um, the applicant will be required to go back to the design review, uh, at their next scheduled meeting, uh, and to, upon a favorable outcome. Um, the applicant will be able to move forward with the softening of the building. And then I will also condition number two is the planning board will request, uh, upon the application of a building permit that the applicant return, um, to, onto a planning board agenda, uh, to submit final renderings of the building, which also shall include material samples uh, for the board's review and approval.
Everybody get that? I say, um, is there a motion to approve this site plan review with the condition that we discussed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Call in favor, roll call.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Deepa Mangatay.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, George, I will be drafting a decision up and, uh, and I will be sending that out to the board. Um, I would also like to motion that to have maybe one member of the planning board come in and sign the decision. Uh, if that could be Dale, I would agree, you know, whomever, uh, would be appropriate. Um, and then, uh, we can move forward and, and you can return back to the design review at their next scheduled meeting.
Do we have a motion to, um, assign Dale Buchanan to sign for the entire board on this?
So moved.
Seconded.
Call in favor?
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Deepa Mangatay.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, passes five zero zero.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Redden, thank you, Mr. Connor.
Okay, so now. Review of 12 Pond Street. Building colors and first floor windows in accordance with condition number twenty-nine of the 12th Pond Street Special Permit Decision dated December twenty-third, two, twenty nineteen. Uh, who do we have here?
So Dale, we have the architect of the project, Chim Chen, who's on the call. Uh, this is kind of, uh, a good follow-up to the last condition that we put in. So, uh, the planning board, um, a year ago, a little over a year ago approved the project, the mixed-use project of 12 Pond Street, which is a, um, I believe it's a sixteen, it's a sixteen-unit building with about, I believe was about three, uh, four thousand square feet of a commercial space on the first floor with parking. Uh, and the project is going forward and, and they've gone, uh, to the point where, uh, they are looking to put up the siding and put the windows in and enclose the space. And so the, the condition that we, uh, and actually I believe this is the first time we actually put this condition in a planning board decision. Um, however, we put, uh, with the help of Trisha, I would say, condition number twenty-nine, where we ask the applicant to come back and submit color renderings and, uh, samples of siding back to the planning board for our approval and review. Uh, within this review process, uh, the applicant, uh, who, who Chim Chen will, 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 will go into detail is, uh, they do, are proposing some, uh, windows on the first floor, which would be the mixed-use space, which I believe would roll up almost kind of as a, kind of, uh, which, which are being used, I would say, you know, you know, within more mixed-use spaces, uh, which would allow for a restaurant, say, uh, per se, to kind of open up its doors uh, and open up the windows to kind of allow for some air to kind of, kind of get into the space and still. With that said, the planning board will be looking at two things tonight. Number one, uh, the colors, uh, the proposed colors of the, of, of the siding, which would also include the roof material. And then also, uh, the windows on the first floor. Uh, the applicant did submit some, uh, samplings to the, um, to the planning board office and they were in the office. Uh, and so with that, I will hand it over to Chim Chen. Uh, prior to that, uh, does anybody have any questions?
Can, can I make one question on this? Um, because that's my understanding too, that last time we saw this, we were kind, we went through, we compared the, um, drawings as submitted to the new construction drawings. We had some questions about that, but it was generally minor. And then we concluded that we would meet again to see actual samples, which obviously in COVID, we're at the office and not in a in-person meeting of the exterior colors plus information on these rolled doors, which everyone was kind of excited about, but, um, but, um, they, they were going to offer more information about that. Um, so I, I'm just wondering a little bit about the colors because the, the sides in the back are sided. Already, I drove there this afternoon and
Okay.
the colors are up and so, um, I'm wondering how that happened again and, um, and so, um, yeah, the back is completely sided and, uh, let's say the side toward Ashland, I believe, was finished and the side toward Framingham maybe was in process. The front is obviously unsided and so that seemed to be a little, um, cart before the horse to me. So hopefully, uh.
Well, I, I, I didn't, you know, I, I, obviously I, I didn't know that, the last time I went by the building was last week. Uh, but with that said, you know, I think we have the ability to approve the colors. Uh, and if we don't like the colors that are there, we can, you know, well, we can, he can, you know, the applicant can paint the colors and paint the siding, uh, to, you know, and or replace the siding to something that we like. And so, um, that's what I would state. Trish, and, uh, you know, if the applicant did take that risk, he did, you know, it was a risk that, um, he took on his own, I would say.
Okay, and I would say we won't talk about the color that's up there. We'll just make a decision of what we want to do and then if it matches up, it matches up. And if not, then we'll have to deal with it. So we'll get turned over, Mr. Chen?
Hi, good evening, board members, um, first of all, Happy New Year. Um, so tonight, uh, I'm going to present you the colorings of the exterior materials. Um, I'm not sure if Emma has the, um, the elevation that I sent earlier today, or can I share my screen?
Uh, you can share your screen, uh, we'll make you a host.
So the front elevation, um, majority of the, uh, color, uh, light gray, the gray color tone. And, um, the, the tower bump out tower, I don't know, sort of a beige, beige color. Um, and the, the bottom floor level is a red brick, red brick color. Uh, I'm assuming that, uh, the, the developer, um, Charlie will bring in a sample of the actual brick color that he's going to be using.
Just to Chin, uh, Chim Chen, I will say that I have not received the brick color, uh, to this point.
Okay. And then on the side of the building, um, we introduced another color here, which is sort of a, a dark khaki color. Um, and then with the back, the, uh, dark gray color, the beige, and then the, the khaki color.
Yeah, I just went to, I'm sorry, I just have to interrupt because actually the back of the building is sided and it is not gray.
It is not gray.
It is not gray. It is the, um, let's see, uh, I believe it's the khaki color, it's the brown color um, in, in where that gray is right now.
So, so Tricia, you're saying the drawings that we're seeing don't match what's already happened?
It's, I'm looking at my phone right now. I took the pictures, the bottom is kind of a light, it's not orangey like this. The bottom is kind of the, the lightest color here, kind of the color of the towers. The middle part where this is shown dark gray is more of a darker khaki, it's more of a brown. And, um, there's no, uh, there's no roof shingles on yet and the towers actually have no siding on them, on them yet, what I'm calling, the vertical pieces are not sided yet. But it's in place if, um, yeah, it, it's on and it's not this color.
Okay, yeah, I.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah, I mean, that's, there's no point in discussing anything here then. Because what what, you know, what?
We we can't, we're looking at something, but it's not even, it's not what it is. I guess we can look at it and we can look at it and see if we like this, what he presented, and then they'd have to do that, but
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, Joe, let's just look at the pictures and and go from there, you know, if if I I will note, I will notify the applicant first thing in the morning and and tell him, you know, obviously whatever he did out there was at his own risk and to halt all siding until the planning board has approved the color as per the condition. And uh
Okay.
that's what I will do and uh that I think that's the best thing to move forward with and and um obviously I know we 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 hold our ground and and we firmly hold our ground. Um, and and that is leading, you know, coming back to the one twenty-eight name project. Um, and so I I I I don't, I wouldn't question. Uh, I think we should just move forward with the plans that we're looking at tonight and, like I said, I'll notify the applicant tomorrow morning.
Okay. Just to thank you for catching that, appreciate it.
Yeah, because I I was over there the other day and it was still the zip board.
The front is. Um, I I don't know if the sides went, I don't know when they started the sides, but the front is just all um, the zip system up there. Um, and what I was noticing in the office um as well, Peter, is that the there are some differences, obviously, between the what was originally presented, um, the final approved renderings um color-wise and um and these renderings and what's on the building. So.
No, I agree. And and a question for Chim Chen is, you know, I you you submitted these out, these renderings today. Um, and I I believe I thought, you know, the the condition, the 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 colors that were submitted to me on Monday by the applicant were reflected upon the 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 plans that were approved by the planning board a year ago. And so I want to, well, my, I'm I'm curious to know what was the changes or was this the changes just within the printing kind of palette of 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 what we are here to discuss tonight? Uh, because the plans, like I said, their plans from the original approval are 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 different. And and Trish, does that kind of satisfy the question?
Yeah, I mean, at least the ones that that you were, I didn't look them up myself, but the ones that were on your on the table with um whatever date on them.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so we're, I feel like we're looking at three sets of conditions, what was approved, these drawings and what's actually built. So which makes it just kind of really confusing. So what I would suggest is to halt all exterior finishes because none of it's approved and to come back with some renderings that A, first show using what you got up there, because it's it's not necessarily a bad thing, but none of it's approved and see what we can, you know, and then we can decide if we like it or not, or if we like the original better, which we did approve. Um, that's just my suggestion.
That's a good suggestion.
Because it's it's not finished by any means, but there's a lot of money up there already tacked up on the building.
Okay, well, I can um Chim and and myself can, you know, I can reach out to Charlie Zamudo, the applicant tomorrow and uh and obviously Jim, Jim can kind of work on his side of things regarding what's up there and I'll I'll make a, I'll I'll take a ride by, but uh when I last visited, it just, the whole building had the zip ties around, there's the green zip board around it, so um does it make sense to look at the windows, Trish?
Yeah.
in in the board?
I think so. I think we can look at the windows.
Does anybody, Joe, in 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 Lakshmi and Deepa, do you have any uh comment?
We can look at the windows now.
Okay.
So just so just to understand, we're talking about the windows, we're talking about the large, what appears to be almost garage-like windows on the front of the commercial spaces. That's specifically the windows we're referring to, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, and so is there um the concept would be the these doors move, these windows move vertically? Or do they twist open?
I could like a garage vertically up.
They move vertically up.
So um they open up and then they're up they look like the operator, such as a garage when uh overhead garage door.
Got it. And so
More like patio dining then.
Just a level set, exactly the windows we're referencing here. So this would be a garage door roll up, this would be one as well.
Yep.
This would, sorry, you're moving it, this would be one.
Yep.
Yes, this would be one.
Correct.
These would be traditional windows, this would be one, yep, this would be one.
Yep.
And then around the side.
This one.
That would be one as well. Okay. So that's the population. I'll erase all my marks, sorry.
Well and then on the
Look at that again, look at the, look at the front again. Okay, how how do the corner, like on this other end, on the corner on the the left side window, how does that open and the one on the side open at the same time? It seemed like they would crash into each other.
Can you drag this thing to the right, Jim, so we could see the end of the building in the drawing? Yeah.
It seems like the end two corner ones on the side and the front would crash into each other. I don't know how, unless they're different, they go up different elevation. You you know, I'm saying, if you roll, if you roll this one up, it's up, and if you roll the side one up, it's right in the same space.
Right, that's correct. Um
So maybe the side ones don't open. Or do they? I mean, I'd just like to know if they do or that, how that works. I I guess
At this point.
if you can make it work, you can make it work, and if you can't, it's going to match as long as they match.
Um, that's a good question, but uh I I think i- if on the side ones, um, they could operate as a as a something at higher elevation, maybe the um once they roll it up, it could go on top of the other ones. Uh, I'm not quite
And I, and and really that doesn't, I'm just pointed that out because it looks like a crash up in the ceiling there, but
Yeah.
as as long as they look the same, it they don't have to open, you know, sometimes they'll be open, sometimes they won't, maybe open the side one time and the front another time. I don't know how all that works, but um, as long as they look, you know, they're the same window, even if it's not operating so that it matches. Do you know what I'm saying? If it's the same, so it's not like a different style on the sides.
I mean, just to clarify, I uh uh since we're pretty far along here, I think we should have an answer to what the plan for those is. There's got to be architectural drawings of this at some level, right? I I mean, this is pretty far advanced, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, so these would be translucent panes of glass, would be very, ton of natural light going into these commercial spaces. Um and they would crease horizontally at the joints, right? So left to right, horizontal, th- those the horizontal joints in the glass is what would uh bend to allow it to roll up, right?
That's correct.
Yep, it'd be like three, three panels, like a garage, roll-up garage, or three panels, but they're glass. And do you have it, do you have that document of that shows the doors, the brochure, whatever these?
Uh, brochure, hold on one second.
I mean, from from my perspective, what's not to like about this? Like it pr- provides an absolutely enormous amount of natural light for any of the tenants. Um, it creates opportunity for restaurant and open-air activity. I it makes, I mean, I I I don't see a downside. I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
I like it. I like the concept. You can turn it into to a sidewalk kind of dining, you know, and have fresh air coming in.
I mean, even re- even retail, you can op- you you can open it up and bring people in into your your store. So I I can't see, I struggle to find a downside.
Yeah, and Dale, I think only the base few panels uh go up, right? The at the top few panels stay, I think, right? Based on how this uh picture reflects. It looks like the base few panels are the ones that go up, not the top few panels stay still, I think.
Well, bas- based on this photo, uh, the upper portion is a is a fixed one, but uh
Yeah, right. So that's, I think that's how the side panel and the ones in the front work, I think. That's how because um
So if it's open, there's still a a row across the top of glass.
No, in in this, in this case, this all three panels goes up to the ceiling.
Oh, all three panels, okay. Yeah, but the picture shows otherwise, the picture, the example shows otherwise.
And and just my my point is like, I agree with Joe, there's that, I don't see any downsides. I just want to make sure it doesn't look like a bunch of garage doors. But they look good on the brochure and the drawing, as long as they look like that and the side, any fixed ones match.
You have the brochures and the jogs, can you put those up, Jim?
Yes, hold on, hold on one second, let me try to open it up.
Then as you're searching for that, are those panel sizes customizable? Because it seems like what's on the brochure is uh, millions are much more wider than what it seems on your rendering. Um, are the, are those customizable or is the intent customizable?
Yeah, those are all customized size.
And then the the ones you're putting on will be clear though, right? They won't be frosted like these garage doors?
No, yeah, it's all clear, clear glass.
Yeah, nice. Yep, I mean.
It looks very nice.
There's
Yeah.
Kind of building, but I think they're nice, they kind of go with the the building that's here.
Can you show the, is there an interior shot? Again, there was an interior somewhere.
This is an example of a of that same garage door that he used on another project.
Did you say you have an example, Jim?
Oh, this 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 photo here is an example of um of that door.
We still see the brochure, Jim.
Oh.
See.
This photo, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, so this is the one I was telling that the top two panels look uh fixed and only the base panels are moving up.
That's a different, that's, that looks like they're a lot taller.
Right.
Because the other one, I think if you only did the two bottom panels, it'd almost be eye level.
Yeah, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, but
Yeah, so it depends on if we're, if the ones we're, for this building, twelve Pond Street, if they're going to actually have more divisions like this, or are they going to look exactly like in the rendering?
Three panel, aye.
What's the, what would be the answer to that? Are we, is it should be exactly like in the rendering would generally be how we do this, right?
Yeah, yes.
So it'll be three panels high.
Three by three panels.
Okay.
Do you have an outside view of that? Um, let's see, I think there was one, we got one with our I like the windows.
Yeah, I think it gives it a nice effect. I mean, I like the look of it.
There's a view from the other side.
Complete with holiday lights.
Yeah, and ghost figure taking a picture. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think these, like we discussed last time, that these could be a very nice addition to this building and what we want the street to become, kind of more interactive type of space.
Yeah.
Um, but um I hesitate to move forward too much until we're looking at the it, because it seems included with the rest of the package here uh with the exterior to make sure that everything is really how we're going to be seeing it in the end um accurately reflected on the elevation. So if we can, you know, even like the color of these windows versus the color of the siding, um you know, all of it should be shown.
Make sure it all goes together.
That it all should go together before we approve this and approve a color for these things, which I assume will match the other windows, but I don't remember what color the actual, the other windows are. Um
Yeah, I I agree, like I continue to be a fan of this, it's exciting, I think it'll be great, but I don't think it's got to be a package. Got to get the rest of it in line.
Yeah.
So just to wrap up, though, we'd like the concept of the roll-up windows.
Yes.
Okay. And and the question would be, is it powder coat, what's the powder coat, what's the exterior powder coat in in relationship to the windows above? Uh, i- i- is that what we're asking?
Yeah, I think we want to see it all together.
Okay.
Um, that that has a color, we're talking about colors. Um, you know, if 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 I can share my screen, I should be able to show you the current condition of the building.
Sure, please do.
I think you are a host, uh, Trish.
Okay. Tell me, uh what do you, are you seeing um?
Shingles.
Okay, so these are the shingles I photographed at um at uh the office today, um, that that I think um Peter had sent out um these colors before, um, but that the black was the sample. But um we're wondering if you know, we don't know if we want to do black, the renderings that were presented before showed more of a gray roof again, um, and not such a pure black. So I think as we look more closely at these colors, we're going to want various, to see various colors of shingles in a larger sample, rather than just this one little square, um, because I don't think black was the, on the original um renderings uh there.
Trish, just to jump in, on the original renderings, to my eyes, it was that weathered wood, which was a brown, which is the actually the roof color, which is in the sample. And that's the roof color that was put up um up on one, which is currently on one twenty-eight name right now.
Right, but given the colors that we may choose for twelve Pond, the weathered wood might might not be the right choice.
Correct.
So
But I just
But anyway, here's the, here's the three colors, the gray. Oh, I don't remember what this one was called. I think this was khaki. Um here's the back of the building, so you can see there's no gray. Here's the light color.
I gotta be honest, the light on the bottom, I, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know about that.
So here's the front, you can see the, that you can see that's not done at all. I can see the start of the side here. This one's a little blurry, but here's the side toward Ashland.
Yeah, that's, and that's not, that didn't match this this one we were presenting with at all.
No, and here, and here's the other side, but obviously if you just drove by and saw the front, you might not even notice that. The sides aren't that big, but this, but this concerns me.
I I like the roof, the way they curved it and did the roof, I like that.
That's what was on the plans, that's what we want them to do.
So, yeah, they've put up quite a bit, but they still have quite a bit to go.
Do it, they have to do it. They're supposed to wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what we were going to need to do then is have them come back with uh, Pete, you'll contact them and tell them they might want to stop.
Uh, yeah, no, I've I've, I'll I'll start the process as soon as the meeting's over and uh and we will kind of go forward. Thank you, Trish, for sharing those pictures.
And, uh, and we will kind of go forward. Thank you, Trish, for sharing those pictures. It looks like that middle section is the biggest, uh, the, the, the difference on this one. Uh, and, uh, but I will work with, uh, the applicant and Jim and, uh, go from there.
Okay, so then what we'll need is, we would like to have a rendering of, of showing how they're doing it now.
Mm-hmm.
What it would end up looking like, and then, uh, option, right? Like what they have, they gave us this time, or does anybody have any other ideas?
The gray, I think the, the gray that Jim was about to show, the gray with the red brick and. I mean, they were showing a black roof, but I, the colors, you know, look, I was a little hesitant about the bottom color on the back. I, I don't think it turned out quite right in the rendering, it was kind of.
Yeah.
Orangeish or pinkish or something, which didn't seem quite right, but, but the other colors I thought were very sharp, but, um, they're not on the building. So, um. So, yeah, it's, it's a little back to the drawing board. Here we go again.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can continue on, I would say.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all we can do. And, uh, and obviously, you know, this was done at their own risk and they're at their own peril and that's it, that's all, that's what we, that's what, that's, uh. That's gonna be, that's, uh, my motto for this one, so. Uh, I can, uh, I can work with Jim and the applicant, and I will, uh, ask for new, uh, new colors and new plans. And once I get those to the office, I will circulate those out and, uh, we can go from there.
While we're in that process, um, because there is that little metal roof section over the entryway. I think mate, we should make sure we get those metal roof samples as well at the same time. So we're looking at these all at one time instead of pieced metal like we did before.
That's a great call.
If they want to get an answer and approval, then should have everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise it'll drag out because we're not gonna approve the whole, we're only gonna approve the whole thing, package.
Mm-hmm.
And, okay. All right.
All right.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to, this new process where we're approving, having them come back and approve these things. We'll call it the Kendall approval. Now, we have, it was put in the decision, we need a Kendall approval.
I wasn't involved with one twenty eight.
I know. Okay. Now, we have minutes. Did everybody read the minutes?
Nope.
Okay, and also I got some business, maybe, can you listen while you read the minutes, or you want me to wait, Joe?
Yeah, I can listen and read at the same time, yep.
Because we're talking about on Main Street for the forty R. The Selectmen next Wednesday want us to have a joint meeting.
Yep.
So that we can be involved and see where it's at without having to have a bunch of back and forth. And I want to give everybody's opinion on that, and if it's doable. I think they're meeting Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Uh, yes, uh, Dale, that is correct, uh, ten to fifty Main Street will be back on the Board of Selectmen's agenda. And I think it's probably best for the planning board to attend, uh, so therefore. Um. For, you know, so therefore I think, you know, we can, um, I would, I would like to, you know, schedule a meeting and post it. And then, uh, and so we can kind of have a joint meeting with the, with the, uh, select board to go over the project before. The project gets too far, not too far down the rail, uh, the line, but, um, just, uh, just to really kind of get. Everybody, I would, I would say on the planning board up to speed on the project and, uh, and. The, it will allow the planning board to add some input out there this time.
Because we'll be, we'll be putting up the zoning rate.
Like, yes, and so this is a forty R district and, and it gets, we know forty R is a whole nother zoning legislation. That we would be trying to therefore adopt and work with the applicant on. To even just to draft a zoning language. And, uh, in most circumstances, the planning board is the, um. I would say, you know, either special permit and or special, um, site plan approval granting authority. And so the planning board is, uh, really a critical board in the process. And so, uh, the, and, and that's what I, uh, foresee for the board in the future as this project continues on.
Everybody's okay with that? Next Monday.
This, next week on Wednesday?
Yeah.
What time on Wednesday?
Yeah, what time would that be?
Seven, isn't it, or no? Pete, do you know that?
Excuse me?
When is it on the agenda, what time?
Uh, I can double check, I can check, uh, I don't know off the top of my head to tell you the truth, Joe. Um, but I will email, I can email out everybody as soon as possible to kind of like give everyone the heads up, uh, when it will be on the agenda.
And this is live, it's a live meeting, right?
Yep, it's a live me, it's a very, it's a live meeting, it's a live Zoom meeting. And, um, and I think, you know, you know, it, it will be good for us to, to take part. In hearing what the proponent and the owner of ten to fifty Main Street is, is thinking about.
I think it's a good idea, I think it's the right move and I'll be there.
So, uh, that, yeah, that's a big thing, and obviously with, and hopefully having more than, you know, a, a quorum, we can, we have to have it a public. We have to post anyway, and so that's kind of, um, the invitation and a, uh, and to, to for a joint meeting.
And then if any, everybody, anybody needs to brush up on the forty R situation, is there some resources for that?
Uh, yes, I can email some stuff out, um, as soon as possible to try to, to brush up on it. Uh, there's a PowerPoint that actually Lisa need, uh, our, uh, council put together. And I can send that out as well, uh, and that can kind of, so everyone can kind of take a look at that. Um, professionally, I've never been in the forty R process before. And so this is fairly new territory for me as well. However, it's, uh, it's done across the state, I know, uh, I know a little bit about it. Uh, but I do not have first-hand experience. Um, however, uh, so I don't, I just want to kind of put that out there for everybody. But, um, but I feel confident that we can, you know, that we can work together and, 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 uh. I- i- and, and do any, and really find out anything. And I myself will be doing some research too, and I'll be sharing that with everybody here on the board, so, um. And so please stay tuned and I'll email out tomorrow.
All right, let's see minutes. Well, let's see, the first one. November twelve.
Um. Can we put the name of the candidates in, in the sections, in section sixty nine to seventy nine? I think it would make sense, right?
I have that marked as well, yeah.
Yeah. Add in the names.
And then, um. Back to line like twenty, twenty five. I don't re, I don't remember what we were discussing there, Ms. Kendall asked and Mandy responded that the full trees were added to the design. But I don't even know what a, what the full trees is referring to.
Yeah, it's unclear.
Does anyone remember that?
I believe, and we can double check on the tape, but I think you were talking about the amount of foliage and what sort of blockage it would provide.
If it was.
It was.
Like winter bear trees.
It was, it was shown, that was shown on there, the, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, I can review the tape and add in a little more detail about what a full tree.
Yeah, I'm just not sure what it's trying to say, I guess, it's almost, it almost sounds like they planted trees.
Yeah. The whole trees were added to the, yeah, for consideration.
Otherwise I didn't have anything else except eliminating the double S in Emma's name.
Good, Joe.
Which.
Uh, almost there, let's see.
Uh, row one oh three and one oh four, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Um. The members discussed how the special permit process would protect the property and influence potential additions. Or added design eliminates integrated with the existing structural structure.
Be elements?
I, I don't know what, I'm not sure what that's saying, but.
Added design elements, probably.
The members, I'll, I'll re, the members discussed how the special permit process would protect the property and influence potential additions. Or added design elements integrated with the existing.
Wrong, wrong word used.
Yeah, concern was reasonable.
I read it as elements, because I was. I knew where it was going. Ready?
One twenty four, one twenty five, the comment about the Valentine, Mr. Toul mentioned the Valentine Estate Barn. And his concern that David Foster and the Valentine Committee are doing whatever is necessary to protect the Barnes Failing Foundation. Uh, I remember talking about this, but I don't. I don't.
Concerned about it.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I'm not sure how to fix it, but, yeah, it's. I'm not concerned that David Foster isn't doing something he's needing to do. I have faith that David Foster is doing what, doing what he has to, to try to keep, keep, protect the barn, um.
Well, you're concerned about the barn, not David Foster.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so it sounds like I'm concerned about David Foster, so, uh.
This concern. About.
It, you know, it, so, so strike his and concern. Uh, about protecting the Barnes Failing Foundation.
Yeah.
Is it, you have that one, Emma?
Yeah, just get rid of the David Foster and the Valentine Committee. They're doing.
Okay.
Ready?
I'm ready.
All entertaining motion to approve the minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
All in favor, roll copy?
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Shmikrishnan, aye.
Keep bowing, good eye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, who passes by zero, zero. Then the next one would be December tenth, minutes. While everyone's reading that, Emma, Pete said, going back to the farm porch situation. Said that you had kind of something worked up. Rough draft from what I gave you or something, I don't know where that's at, if we can. Have something for the next meeting, so at least we can get up and we can discuss a little bit, and then we can see what we have to do for the meeting and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, I've roughed up a, a draft, um, based on some other municipalities, similar bylaws. That I think you pointed us to, uh, and I would be happy to share that draft with the, with the board before the next meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work.
Um. Row, row sixty one, review of five Homer, I think it's Avenue, five Homer Avs. Uh. Sign design.
Five Homer Avenue, yeah.
Fifty four and fifty seven, I just need an L added to my name.
So how's that, Pete? Did you, you went over there, right, the dentist? He's coming along.
Yeah, he's coming, he, he's, 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 I, he's all, he's met all the criteria and the permits and he, he's doing good. So, uh, he put the frosting up on the windows on the, on the bottom half, I thought looked pretty good. Uh, so you can't look in, but it's a beautiful building, he did a great job and, uh. You know, they, I took the whole full tour and into the basement and, um. He, he did, he put a lot of money, he put a lot of work and, and energy into that building, so I think it came out really good. I know he has, he still has to do the lights on the exterior, which are gonna be those goose neck lights that come down. Uh, and light that sign, I know he was waiting for a, uh, uh, he was waiting for electrician to come and do that. But, uh, for the most part, they've, they've fulfilled everything, uh, and they're, 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 I'm trying to open up, you know, get some clients in there. Awesome.
Um, Rose, the section on Valentine zoning update. Um. Feel like the, the language is a little bit buzzy, I, I mean. I, I think the update from Peter, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, was just that, you know. This was the December tenth meeting, right, which was. Immediately before the town meeting, when was the town meeting on the twelfth?
I believe so, Joe, I, yes.
Right, so to me, the update that you provided was that, um. You know, based upon discussion with the Valentine Committee, as well as town management, that. You know, the decision had been made to remove the Valentine zoning update from the upcoming town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, because of the need to have a more deliberate conversation with the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like, to me, that was what, that was the update from you.
Mm-hmm.
This is just like deliberately slowed down and it's a bit fuzzy and unclear and impossible to me, like, I just. Think it could be said a little bit more straightforward.
Yeah, no, I can, I'll, I'll go back and look at it and, and try to be straightforward and, and, uh, and.
I can just say it now if you want, like, it's, uh, you want to just nail it and be done?
Please do.
Yeah, so, Mr. Matson provided an update concerning the Valentine Committee's activities. And the decision by town management to remove. The proposed Valentine zoning article from the upcoming town meeting on December twelfth.
Yeah.
Um. You, you know, the, it, this was done to allow for. Uh. A more, uh. Uh, more detailed discussion around potential, uh. Uses of the property or something like that. You guys okay with that? Does that dive with your recollections? No, I'm good.
This small thing, small thing, but line forty nine, I think it says more details. I think just a, it should be regarding the new equipment, I think. Just an R missing. Just an R missing. Otherwise I'm good.
There a motion to approve the December tenth, twenty twenty minutes?
As amended?
As amended.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passed five zero zero. Okay, so is there. Any other reports from. Board members or planner?
Board members first.
Just that meeting on Wednesday, we'll remember, you'll email us all out, remind us of that.
And, um. The Board of Select co-meeting.
That's what I said, on Wednesday, Board of Select.
Yeah, but, uh, but no, the biggest thing is the Board of Select meeting and I know I brought up a few of you, uh, today was a big day in the office. Uh, I will say, um, we have, um. One twenty eight Main Street has received, you know, final building inspections. Uh, and so they are, uh, good to go over there. Um, they haven't done anything for the, for the, for the commercial space in the front. But everything regarding the residential units above, uh, they have satisfied the town with, uh, I can see it, so. Just wanted to give you, ever the board, the heads up on that, uh, which I think is good and, uh, Robert Hillway seems to be. At the finish line, I will say, and so that shall be opening up fairly soon, uh, which is a good thing. And so, uh, the town can, uh, open up those. Uh, sixty six, sixty two units of affordable housing, and so I think that's a great feather in the cap of the town. But the biggest thing is just, uh, the next up is the, uh, select board meeting. Uh, and I will kind of send that meeting out for that. I will send everything out for that tomorrow. And, um, and I'll be in contact with everybody and the next planning board meeting will be on the twenty eighth.
I'm sorry, on what day?
The twenty eighth of January, which is, uh, the next, uh. The fourth Thursday of the month.
And then in terms of coordinating around the working session for the zoning, downtown zoning. We would plan to have that on the twenty eighth?
Uh, we can. We could put that on the meeting for the twenty eighth. I still just, I, I still have the request of, uh. I, I still have the, I request of C C, uh, DuSet, no, I'm sorry, that's in February. Uh, in February, C C DuSet, I, she asked to be on the planning board's agenda, uh, as a follow up from the cell tower and I, and I. Uh, through, you know, I, I did, I would like to grant her thirty minutes, I think, I believe on February eleventh. To talk about, you know, what she has. What she has, uh, researched on cell towers and so. The twenty eighth seems pretty wide open at this time, so I think that will be, could be a good meeting to put the zoning stuff on. Is that correct, Emma? Okay, so yeah, we'll put the zoning stuff on the twenty eighth and we can, in the, in the meantime, we can, um. If anybody wants, you know, I'll send out some more information early next week and, um, we can kind of, you know, continue to work on it.
Okay, we need the homework from Emma. Peter and Emma, gotta tell us what Homer, I, I, I mean this sincerely, like. Give us a list of, like, you guys need to do the following four things, study this zoning map, study these use table, like, just. You know, you, you gotta just le, lead us and then this way here, we'll, they'll have a really productive meeting, in my opinion.
Kind of like read the minutes ahead of time.
No, no, that's, that's not possible. I, I do it better when I'm with you guys, you know?
All right, there's nothing else. Then is there a motion to close the January fourteenth meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, and that passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody, and good night.